Well, good evening and thank you for being here. Today is January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We hope you all have survived the snow we get outside. We've been at this since February. So we start getting really cranky. For those of you who have business before us tonight, we get really cranky. I tend to say no a lot. Welcome, welcome. It's the tradition of, um, Amy, do we have our, uh, our chaplain on the line?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's the tradition, this board and boards all across the nation. How do we do about the thing? We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance and we're gonna get a prayer. This prayer is referred to as a solemn act of prayer. And so at some point you have it beginning. It's not for you all, it's for the citizens. What we do, we take very seriously so we seek wisdom. We make decisions on account. So we'll get started officially. Captain Light, are you there? Amy, was he there?
Yeah, I'm here. Lord, we come to you in behalf of the county commissioners. We thank the work they've already done today. Pray you'll bless them tonight, give them the wisdom they need tonight for this meeting. Pray you protect them and help them in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands. Justice for all.
Now you see why I told you. I'm glad to get out of the chair.
You can go back to watching the panel.
All right.
Let's see if we have one addition. We're creating this with the item J V's at the federal. We had a set item L. Set L. Yes. Ready or not.
Mr. Chairman, what is that addition?
This is sewer easement. We did, uh, we did a resolution supporting, uh, allowing, uh, development on one fifty to connect to sewer.
Right, okay.
Within our Brans Creek, Brans Creek, um, conservation easement by the Air Force.
I'm good. I'm good. I just want to know what was.
This was for the resolution. And so we did get that done. And so now this is the approval of that grant easy to develop.
Deal. No, I hadn't got anything.
We had a, uh, any other additions? Right, not the votes of thirty.
Some.
Second.
All right. And then, um.
We had both.
Then we have voted the first.
The amended consentant? Aye.
So moved.
The consentant, Jen. Here's amended.
The full again.
Yes.
Second. Aye.
All right, then the minutes of January third, motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Aye.
Consentant, Jen, has been amended. I have amended the bill.
So moved.
Okay. Aye.
All right, anyone for, uh? Anyone, April? All right, we're gonna move on then. Item three. That is, uh, gentlemen, appearing for Project Rabbit. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members, for hearing this request from the E D C for Project Rabbit. Okay, and, uh, this, like, uh, Project Bishop that the board considered a few months ago, this is another, uh, distribution center project. It's an online retailer that, of course, sells its products online and distributes to all their customers throughout the U.S. They're evaluating locations in multiple states for a new e-commerce fulfillment center. If our community were chosen, uh, the company would create two thousand five hundred full-time jobs by the end of two thousand and twenty-eight. About, uh, two thousand four hundred and fifty of these jobs would be fulfillment-type positions. The rest would be supervisory and administrative positions. But also, in addition to these full-time jobs, they also expect to create about two thousand six hundred seasonal part-time jobs as part of this project. As far as the investment, they're talking about a five hundred and eighty-four million dollar investment through the construction of a new facility and the installation of major equipment. Uh, the majority of these improvements will be done by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, as far as permitting, we don't anticipate any issues. Of course, this would be in the city limits of China Grove. Uh, the company will work with China Grove staff and county staff and navigate the permitting process. Now, typically, the board will consider a project like this for their level-three incentive grant. Of course, that's a five-year grant with, uh, the grant equivalent to eighty-five percent of the new taxes paid. Of course, this exceeds that threshold. Uh, but of course, you've seen the job numbers, the investment numbers. This is a, uh, pretty high-impact project for Rowan County and for the entire region. Uh, we think it'd be the largest new jobs announcement in Rowan County's history. So with that in mind, um, in order to have a better chance of securing this project, we're asking the board for something different tonight. We're asking for, uh, a pretty big and dramatic revision to the incentive policy. What we're asking for is instead of a five-year grant extending that to fifteen years. And during that grant period, it would be a, a grant equivalent to eighty percent of the new pack taxes paid on the property. Now, the board has approved longer terms before. Most notable was Chewy about three years ago. That was a ten-year grant and also more recently, Project Popcorn, uh, Project Rabbit, I'm sorry, um, Project Bishop. That's a typo, apologize. But also the new North Point Development on Webb Road also was approved for a longer than a five-year incentive agreement. The additional, one additional request is we're asking for the board also consider free expedited permitting, that twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee that goes along with that. We'd ask the board to waive that in this instance. Uh, and as far as other avenues of assistance, uh, state, uh, grants and programs are going to be essential for this project. We've asked the state to consider anything they can to help with, uh, road improvements, infrastructure improvements to the site. And we're hopeful on that, but we still haven't heard anything definitive regarding that just yet. And again, I mentioned how this will be, uh, in the town limits of China Grove. Uh, the town of China Grove Town Council will consider an incentive request for this project at their February first meeting. Now, as far as the fiscal impact of this project, uh, we made certain assumptions based on information we got from the company. But basically, uh, the investment would be done by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, and that would be that five hundred and eighty-four million dollar investment I mentioned earlier. And also, we tried to factor in depreciation on equipment best we could. We used the latest depreciation schedule issued by the state and also assumed a ten-year lifespan, um, on this equipment. One other thing to note for the board is, of course, uh, this would be, uh, a fifteen-year, uh, grant. But with the normal lifespan for this type of equipment, uh, we anticipate that equipment would be cycled out after anywhere from eight to ten years. So basically, the, the company would have to reinvest in this project at some point during that in- incentive period. So that would mean, uh, additional, uh, I guess, tax revenue for the county, but it could also mean additional tax grant dollars because, you know, it'd be the percentage based on, you know, the investment at the time. Uh, but again, that is something we do anticipate at some point, at least, uh, half the way through the project. And as far as the actual numbers and the impact of it, uh, we anticipate about thirty-four million dollars being collected over that fifteen-year period. Uh, the value of the incentive grant with this, uh, proposal we're, uh, putting in front of you would be about twenty-seven million dollars. The county would retain about six-point-eight million dollars during that time period. Now, how that compares to the standard grant is that, um, under that standard level-three grant, you see the numbers up there, you'd still collect that thirty-four million, but, uh, the incentive grant would only be about twelve-point-nine million over five years. Um, and the net revenue would be about twenty-one million to the county. But with this proposed incentive, again, thirty-four million dollars in revenue, twenty-seven in, uh, grand dollars and six-point-eight net revenue to the county. So you're looking at a difference of about fourteen million dollars, uh, versus the standard level-three incentive grant. That's a difference of about a hundred and eleven percent. Uh, in addition to, uh, the twenty-five hundred full-time jobs created by Project Rabbit, uh, using Jobs EQ software, we're also projecting that it would create to about another five hundred and ninety-five indirect and induced jobs in Rowan County. Uh, and that would generate about twenty-nine million dollars in wages and benefits for those employees. And of course, uh, indirect and induced jobs, I mean, well, uh, as first of all, indirect jobs are jobs from, um, companies that provide services to Project Rabbit. Could be, you know, a supplier, could be somebody paid to haul their, their goods to, you know, other warehouses. Induced jobs are jobs created by these employees spending their money in the community, like going to a local restaurant or to a local store. So again, those are the five hundred and ninety-five jobs we anticipate being created by these two thousand five hundred full-time jobs. Uh, this would also lead to a, um, I guess, gross revenue projection of about seventy-six million dollars to the companies creating these five hundred and ninety-five indirect and induced jobs. Yes, sir. And, and as far as the impact of the part-time jobs, uh, we anticipate a, uh, the creation of about a hundred and three indirect and induced jobs, uh, as a result. And those would generate about five-point-one million dollars in wages and benefits. And they'd also create about thirteen million in gross revenue for the companies creating these indirect and induced jobs. And again, those are the part-time seasonal jobs. Now, if you combine all that together, the full-time and the part-time jobs, that leads to about six hundred and ninety-eight total indirect and induced jobs and about thirty-five million employee wages for those jobs and about eighty-nine million dollars in gross revenue for those companies. Sorry, I know it's a lot of numbers. Any questions so far regarding this?
I think I'd read where just the twenty-five and, uh, forgive me, you've already said this, the twenty-five hundred full-time jobs would generate payroll directly to Rowan County between ninety-six and nine, ninety-six and ninety-seven million dollars a year?
Well, it would generate about twenty-nine million in payroll, wages and benefits for those, uh, five hundred and ninety-five jobs.
Well, that's the.
Oh, I'm sorry, you mean for the twenty-five hundred jobs themselves, yeah?
Full-time jobs, annual payroll of about ninety-six million dollars.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, sir. Yes.
Hey, Scott.
Yes, sir.
What does the, um, what's the timeframe, I guess, industry uses to, to say is seasonal? Like, what months would that be? I, I assume it's Christmas time, but.
Well, um, we haven't been given a clear definition from the company, but for the purposes of this model, we anticipated, uh, about a four-month employment period and about twenty hours a week. So you kind of that ramp up toward Christmas, maybe a little bit afterwards, but yeah, we projected four months, part-time labor for it. But, um, again, uh, in total, um, what we're asking for from the board tonight is to consider a fifteen-year tax grant at eighty percent for Project Rabbit and also waiver of that twenty-four-hour expedited permitting fee. And, uh, just to summarize, uh, again, twenty-five hundred new full-time jobs by the end of two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand six hundred seasonal part-time jobs and about six-point-eight million in net tax revenue for the county over fifteen years. And again, six hundred and ninety-eight indirect and induced jobs. And we understand this is a very large ask of the board, but we feel this project would have a huge impact on Rowan County and also feel this package will put us in better position to land Project Rabbit.
Um, Scott, just one quick question. So assuming we land this, um, how helpful is that to further economic development and bring other businesses here?
Well, uh, first of all, you'd have at least the, um, I guess, the, um, positive news that would come from it, landing a huge company like that and then the excitement created by it. But, but also too, I mean, uh, for job numbers these high, you're gonna have people coming in from outside of Rowan County, obviously, to fill some of those. So I think you're gonna see additional, um, sales tax revenue, things like that generated from it. And of course, again, all of our suppliers will benefit from it. And, uh, your restaurants, stores, uh, but also I think it'll cause more consultants, more companies to consider Rowan County just because, again, it's similar to the Chewy effect. You know, we landed Chewy and all of a sudden people start talking about Rowan County. I think you'll see something like that for this project, uh, just because, again, the sheer numbers involved.
So when we did Chewy, uh, we had stepped way outside of our, our typical incentive comfort zone. Didn't we do seventy-fifty?
Uh, for Chewy, we did, uh, ten years. The first five years were at eighty percent and then the second, uh, final five years were at fifty percent.
So question that would come from the community is, you know, why would commissioners do something of this magnitude? And, uh, our heart will, will always be, uh, be with Chewy because they, um, they really put Rowan County on the map and we still love and appreciate them. When you consider that project, it was posted at a thousand, was it a thousand jobs?
Originally, it was twelve hundred jobs.
Jobs. Um, they're moving toward two thousand now?
Well, they're at fourteen hundred last we heard and still looking for more people.
Yeah. And that project was fifty-five million dollars, if I recall, right?
It was.
So, um, a, a projected twelve hundred job, fifty-five million-dollar project. This will be twenty-five hundred jobs plus twenty-six hundred part-time and seasonal with a total project value of five hundred and eighty-four million. Was that right? Five hundred and eighty-four million.
Right.
So when you consider a seven-year, uh, ten, uh, a tenure, which is the first five years is eighty percent, second was fifty. Um, when you really scale these two, this is something that we, we really wanted to go after. In a, in a deal like this, there's a huge investment in Rowan County, but the jobs, we feel like are more, the most important thing. I mean, I'll say it, we're, we're doing well financially as a county. So we can go after companies like this because our number-one concern is, um, helping folks get better jobs, helping them get jobs with benefits, um, benefits including health insurance, retirement plans, paid vacation. This affects the culture of a community. It gets mom and dad out of three part-time jobs when they're having a tough time being home with their kid and helping them with schoolwork. It helps them consolidate those jobs, uh, hopefully into one job with full benefits, um, and retirement and a future and hope. And so from our side, uh, looking at this, we are willing to forego some of the financial tax revenue benefit in order to create, uh, this scenario of, of, uh, better hope and opportunity for folks. Um, we know what they told us. Now, this is just me, um, uh, talking now. Uh, we, we know what they said their, their pay would, would be. Well, I'm not even gonna go there. I, I, um, it's, the, the pay is going up and up and up in Rowan County. My wife and I recently sold our house and, uh, um, a, a daughter and, um, uh, but what, one of the folks that I've met, uh, through the sale of my house, um, uh, said that he came here from a coastal community and he's making eight dollars an hour more here than he was where he was working in the same type of job. And so, um, he is thrilled to be here in Rowan County. And, and so these companies that come in providing these benefits, it, it's, it's going to put pressure on like companies, uh, like we were talking about earlier, to provide, uh, benefits through market-driven, uh, forces to, to get them to work here. And so a, as you see us approve something with the magnitude of, of incentives that we're willing to give, remember what this means to the community from, um, um, employment perspective and a perspective of provide, it's not the tax revenue in this one. In this one, it's the jobs and the, the benefits and the.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to note, too, the impact this project would have on the town of China Grove. I mean, we try to bring opportunity to Rowan County as a whole, but especially for some of our towns that need that growth to their tax base. And I, I know five hundred and eighty-four million dollars would go a long way in China Grove paying for, you know, police, you know, roads, uh, everything. So it'd be a huge impact for that community as well, so.
If I remember correctly, uh, a lot of us have been around here a long time and we remember the devastation that occurred, not the Bigfoot. That's why these meetings get so long. You get me on track. The devastation that happened when Cannon Mills closed down. And we lost, if I remember correctly, somewhere around fifty-one, fifty-two hundred jobs when Cannon closed down. And here we have at one whack, almost with different times of the year, we'll replace fifty-one hundred jobs. And at the worst, we're gonna have twenty-five hundred full-time jobs. So when you say it's gonna impact China Grove, uh, that's an understatement. If we were able to land this, because it, it will just mean more jobs for everybody. Restaurants, guy at the gas station, uh, you know, just every business you can think of. They're gonna have a lot more customers in the future because of this, this huge half-a-billion-dollar investment in our community.
But look at Chewy. We, we brought, um, sewer under the interstate using C D B G funds. And now we've got companies looking at almost three million square feet of additional projects down Long Ferry Road. Um, a, a new, um, convenience store was built right outside of Chewy. So there is that effect. Well, I wanna say one more thing and, um, we're not gonna be able to do this without the help of the state of North Carolina. So, um, I'm asking, um, Raleigh and our governor, um, can, can really help us out with this? Department of Commerce, they, they know what this would mean to Rowan County. Believe, uh, Jim was right. We still hold the record for the most jobs lost in a single day in the state of North Carolina. Um, if this project goes through, uh, this will be the second-largest economic development announcement in North Carolina in the last twelve months. So we, we are putting our money where our mouth is. We wouldn't be doing the extent of the incentives that we're doing if we didn't think this was good for our community. So we are so grateful for the help that we've received from the governor's office and from Department of Commerce in the past. And we're, we are, we are asking, uh, passionately for their help, um, in, in this project. And, uh, we will look forward to celebrating with all of them when this, uh, when the ribbon's cut on this. So thank you to the governor's office and to, um, to all that'll make this, uh, deal come through. I hope, I hope that's okay to say. We're kind of putting, uh, hopeful expectations out there, but it does take a team. And, um, we've made some, some really nice announcements with the help of, uh, folks in Raleigh. So, and, uh, and, and, uh, along with that is, uh, Harry Warren, Warren and Carl Ford have been really instrumental in helping with these, so. Okay. So, uh, commissioners, do we have a motion?
Get open the public hearing.
Oh, do, do we have a motion to open a public hearing? I get ahead of myself. So now, uh, this is the legal part. We need to do a public hearing. And so if anyone would like to speak on this subject, uh, please come forward and speak. We'd love to hear from you. All right, not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the incentive grant for Project Rabbit?
So moved.
All right, thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Good luck. Just all luck in this. All right, Shane, um, public hearing for Z oh-nine dash two-one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this is a request, uh, so public hearing for rezoning request from property owners Jay Powell and Swatna Calgary for their property that they own on, uh, the twenty-one-hundred block of Glover Road. So if you look at the screen here in the center, you'll see a blue outline of the property. And it's a few hundred feet east of Old Concord Road. This is Glover Road here. This is the extremity of the Town of Fates, E T J. Zooming into the site, this is a aerial image from about a year ago. And so it's predominantly wooded. Just a few stats here, too. We got thirty-five-point-five acres total. And then you see some blue area here that's associated with the Crane Creek Flood Plains, about six acres. And you have a little drainage feature that extends through the, the property here. And this little area here, I think, is what initially got their attention along with some other things, but it's a little grassed area. And there's interest in, um, having the game of cricket be played in this property. And we'll talk more about that specifically, but just to take a step back, they did purchase this property back in August. So they've owned it about five months. And the two options to accommodate, regardless of what sport it is, it's an athletic field operation. So you could either be rezoned C B I with a special use permit or with the change to take advantage of what, uh, we did in the ordinance about six months ago. You can keep your R A zoning, not bring commercial zoning into an area, but have a C D process where it still has this legislative approach, kind of like our solar farms, where you're not changing the designation and nomenclature other than the, the C D part. But, um, that's what they've chosen here. So the request would be rezoned from R A to R A C D for a athletic field operation specifically for cricket. And this is an overall of the site plan. You see, this is Glover Road at the top, the property boundary approximately here. Zoom in a little closer. There's a, some remnants of former buildings, um, still present on site, but it's hard to really see from the road. You can barely see them, but, uh, I believe those will be removed. But there is an existing drive that will be widened a bit to accommodate a twenty-foot-wide gravel driveway that will cross the little drainage draw, draw here and lead to about forty-eight gravel parking spaces. And then this, the grassed field here, too. So one thing I do want to point out, and this was, uh, identified at the planning board meeting, but the property owners have agreed to maintain an undisturbed forty-foot buffer and whatever's within that, um, will remain. Maybe some nuances. I think there may be a, a couple dead trees that were referenced before, but by and large, it's just preserved. So the rest of this, we don't know, but right now it's wooded. It could be removed. So just want that to be clear, too, for the board's reference, but that is a self-imposed requirement after talking with them. I think it's a nice gesture to provide that little bit of a buffer. We'll look at the surrounding property and what's, what's there, but this is one of the, uh, nearest neighborhoods and, and residential, uh, uses along with this one on the corner, uh, to that field. But just to zoom in, it's close on that field. It, it's not a circle, so it's slightly oval-shaped in, uh, size. And it's about four to five acres is a typical cricket. And it's about four to five acres is a typical cricket cricket field, about a 400-foot diameter. And there's a couple movable bleachers that are proposed. It will have a portable restroom there. No permanent lighting, this proposed. Hit a few points. One of the things too, that they did stress in terms of an impact, it will be light dependent. So again, with no lights, it's got to be played during the day. And with that, there's no specific days or hours of operation, just when it's light outside, they may play. And it can be fair game for practice, for typical matches and also tournaments too. Really don't have a grasp on spectators, how many folks may show up, but it sounds like primarily just family. And but no specific number, one of the neighbors from the planning board meeting did make reference to that. And I will touch on that in the condition for potentially how to maybe navigate what to expect or potential turnout of folks that would want to see a match or a tournament. Here is a good image. This looks like a almost a professional field here. This is up in South German Town, Maryland, the Northwest DC. It is maintained by the Montgomery County Parks Department. That gives you an idea perspective of the size and then parking arrangement for that that field operation, but the the sport of cricket, and it's popular in many different countries, but primarily England, Australia and India. And it's probably most similar to baseball here. We have two teams of 11. And you have a a pitcher, which is referred to as a bowler, and then a batter and outfielders. Now, a game can last or match can last three to seven hours, maybe longer depending on the the tournament. And it's a predefined. They refer to them as the number of overs, which may be kind of like outs or innings or something like that to define how long is a game. So it definitely varies based on what's chosen with with that in mind. Hopefully you'll find this helpful. I've tried to grab in looking at the different locations that some of the clubs in the Charlotte region use. Did a few Google screen grabs of these parks and I'll walk you through a few of those. Hopefully you'll find this fruitful, but in Kilborn Parks in Charlotte, it's just east of downtown, so it's more of an urban setting here. They have one multipurpose field here that's can be used for cricket or soccer as well. It's a public park. And notice within most of these, the one below is a little different, but see the size of the parking lot for and also the surrounding uses and tree coverage. Hopefully that'll be a little bit of a guide of what these may look like after the fact. On the lower image, this is a private field and this is dedicated just for cricket. And with these three houses in their backyard, it looks like more of a communal setting. So probably a bit of an outlier, but this is in a rural setting outside of Gastonia. And the only one that I noticed was private, the rest were managed in a public park. On the upper part, Robert L. Smith Park, this is north of the airport in Charlotte. Public. And I think there's a lot of floodplain through here, so that's why you see no development around it. And this again is a multi-use field, not a dedicated space. The largest part that I noticed, Reedy Creek, it's inside the Beltway, but definitely more of a suburban setting here. And this is also multi-use, multiple different fields. Again, pretty small parking area for these. The upper image, this is south of Spartanburg, South Carolina. And not a lot of neighbors, but maybe on the north side, this will be soon be developed here, it looks like. But this, I believe, is a dedicated cricket field, but couldn't confirm that with their website. The most rural setting of the ones I noticed. And then lastly, on the bottom is Weston Park, Winston-Salem. Public. And this is just for cricket here. And this is, I believe, a suburban part, almost extending in the rural area in Winston. All right, a few pictures of the surrounding area here to touch on. In the general entrance or picture taken from the proposed entrance, looking back toward Old Concord Road. There is a house here in the woods on the north side, but largely undeveloped. Looking back towards Faith and the two below subdivisions. Clover Glen on the north side of Glover is, it was established in 97, there's 10 single-family dwellings on 15 lots. And then on the opposite side, and this would back up or be beside the cricket field, just off the the tree line here is Copperfield subdivision. And that's 12 lots and 12 houses established in 89. And back looking from Clover Glen into Copperfield Road, the Peel and Wicker residents here in the cricket fields just beyond these houses here. One thing I did do after the planning board meeting is went back out when all the leaves fell and tried to get a better perspective from the field area to surrounding properties. Still kind of difficult because there's nothing that close to most of the angles, but what I wanted to do as well is just give a perspective of most likely what you would see less, the degree of tree removal that may occur. So at this yellow area from any point, that's the direction the picture or point the picture was taken from and the direction it's looking. So we're looking back, Old Concord Roads beyond the tree line here. And really, the first three are just the same direction, getting closer to the property corner here. The the lots kind of crowned in this location and it drops off in this direction here and sort of in a U-shaped pattern down to this point. You can't see anything from this vantage point, but if I get right at the tree line, I can barely make out the nearest accessory structure that fronts on Old Concord Road. In the opposite direction, going back to the other corner, looking back towards the adjacent neighborhood. May not be able to tell here, but there's the backside of a couple houses you do see. And again, I'll touch on the next slide a better perspective, but that's the line we see here, looking back. On the upper image, the proposed drive would come in and that parking area would be here. So that last picture was taken here, looking back to the rear of these two properties here. And on the lower image, this is that direction. Again, the 40-foot retention would be around the property line and the rest could be removed if desired. And in the first three images we saw, looking back towards Old Concord, that most likely is the the tiny bit of a structure that can be made out in the image here. From the land's plan perspective, of course, it doesn't touch on athletic field operation. There's no specific recommendations. It did reference the East Rowan Diamond Sports as an approved private field. The plan actually referenced for the the need at that time, so I don't know if that could be construed as the need here for cricket in Rowan County, but that's the the only thing that I could glean from the report, you know, for this reference here. Something I believe is noteworthy, if you look at the soil layer, you have a couple of different types of soil types that are present. And if you remember that floodplain here, the drainage feature here, you can see this red area is what we classify typically as difficult to perk. And with that, that only leaves about five acres of of Cecil soil that here that usually perks. This does not mean this won't perk, but it's just a general guide and typically holds true. And of course, we see Mecklenburg Eden soils, there's a Chiakula, if I'm pronouncing that right. And then close enough. And Sedgefield. The plan also referenced in trying to address potential noise impacts, they provided a sort of the human perspective, it's probably difficult to tell, you may see it better in your your site plan in the packet, but the human perspective of what's quiet versus what's painfully loud. And the zoning ordinance limits decibels during this time to 70. So it provides that reference of what is within that category, but maybe more importantly, they had, they cited a study they found in 98 that talked about a softball field and the typical impact from that operation and how it dissipates from the source. And on the plan, you've noticed that they measure from the center of the field over to the nearest residence, which is 8, 900 feet. And of course, ours measures from property line, which will at least be, and of course, it varies because there's not a central focus of the noise source, it could be bleachers or the outfield. But at no point here, and it's suggested 75 decibels, 25 feet away, but we're probably somewhere in here. And again, most likely a a small number of visitors in participants. From our notice, we put up the sign on the fourth, sent letters to 21 residents. They're 100 feet away, some of them more. We notified everybody in this neighborhood here that want to just do one side of the road. And four people did speak at the planning board meeting. The comments are generalized in the report, I believe on page five and six. Had a couple of comments that they worked within the planning board recommendation, and I'll touch on that here shortly, but planning board did recommend unanimous approval. They offered this statement of reason with consistency for the consideration, so the board would need to make a motion to consider the statement and also the requests here. That approval was conditioned on three conditions, and I incorporated that within this list. Also shared that with the Calgary family and they've agreed to again, this is a conditional district, so these are mutually agreed upon, they're not imposed upon the the applicant, so the 40-foot came about from the meeting too. It was originally 20 and they talked about increasing that, so that's the planning board. Number two, it came up of what if they used it for some other type of a sporting event? So it's specific to cricket. Three, and this is to hopefully address, well, what if there's going to be a big crowd show up? Well, there's 48 spaces and you got to be within the parking area, so of course, you could load up a lot of folks and vehicles, but you got to be within the designated parking area, not park along the road or anywhere else in the site. No use of permanent or then the high-intensity athletic field type lighting, that's a restriction. No use of speakers. I don't know if the board is concerned, I'm not even sure if they want to propose signage, but if there's a concern about that, it could be a condition. One of the neighbors was concerned about access when there's nobody there. And they've agreed to put up some type of a vehicular restriction at the entrance. So those are the conditions that could be talked about here tonight. Any questions?
All right, anything for Shane? All right, well, we'll, does the applicant, would you like to come forward? Do you have anything to to say? Yeah, come on, come on up here. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Good evening, good. Yeah, I'm passionate about game, so I've been playing for almost like 35, 30, 35 years or so. But I've been playing in US like almost 20 years now. So I was in Michigan, we loved the game, so we wanted to like use the game for, make sure that all the community come together, play, enjoy for a bit and then get back home. So that was the idea. But again, as as Shane was saying, we are not planning to put any like a floodlights or anything major at all. We usually play on the weekends, so just play for a little while and then just get some physical exercise, because most of the people who are coming to play the game, they have like a full-time jobs. This is like a, just like how, I mean, my, even my office colleagues, they go, we, I mean, even I played with them, like I play baseball in the evening time, the floodlights in the real county grounds. But we wanted to enjoy the game, cricket game as well. So that's the reason we wanted to propose these options. And luckily, I was able to find a good spot, good place in Rowan County. So I'm glad, I live in Cabarras County, I'm very close by, about 25 minutes from here. But I love the place, it's very close. And the good thing is, I don't have to disturb much. I mean, the field is already there. In the past, they used to use for agriculture. So I don't have to do much. I mean, it's so convenient. It's going to help me to help grow the community as well.
I think this would be a good thing for our local culture. Up to this point, a cricket field is something you stopped at on the way to the river if you were going fishing. So so this will be good for Rowan County. We'd we'd love to attend one of your oh, heck, we'd we'd like to play. Attend to some, but I can't figure the sport out. I just know that it's pretty rowdy and loud. Okay, not really. Pretty, uh, pretty gentlemanly, is that a?
Yeah, exactly. It's just like a baseball. Instead of having 11 innings, we have like a number of overs, like a 10, like a 10-over game or 20-over game. But the the period is, if it is a 10-hour game, it takes about hour and a half or two at the most. If it's a 20-over game, it takes three hours and so on. So the different formats and internationally, they also play for five days.
Days?
Five days. I mean, in the daytime, but we are not equipped for those kind of things. But I mean, yeah, there are like international game and people love those kind of games, like a five game, because you need to have a lot of patience. And you need to have skill to play those kind of games. So that's the reason it's only played in the international.
There are maximum white limit.
Pretty much anybody can play.
Thank you.
Well, that's great. The the only thing I'd like to see is see you guys move to Rowan County.
Oh, I'd love to. Yeah. I mean, I love the area. It's a very good place too.
Say you moved from Michigan?
Yes.
Okay, well, good.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I from, yeah, India, we came to here US and then I was in Michigan for almost 15 years. My kids born there, but we had enough with the cold. I mean, we love, but we love this weather. We have, I mean, we can see everything. I mean, like a few days back, we also saw snow. I mean, we don't get very often, but at least we get to see.
How long have you been in North Carolina?
Seven years now. Yeah. And I'm not planning to move anywhere. This is my retirement spot, so I'd like to have.
We're happy to have you here and this is something new for us and it's exciting. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to getting out there and seeing some games.
Oh, definitely. I was welcome. And we love to teach you as well.
Yeah, well, that would be good. All right, well, we'll do a little bit of business and then we'll be back to you, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Um, so we're going to have a public hearing now. And if there's anyone that's here to speak, Shane, okay, never mind. All right, do we have anyone like to speak for or against us? Or just have any comments? All right, hearing them, close the public hearing and then.
Yeah.
Yeah. I never knew about cricket until I went to seminary and my professor Winston Persoed from Guyana, South America, introduced us all to the game.
Oh, nice. Guyana is part of near the West Indies of South America. Yeah, people in West Indies, they love the game. I mean, they used to be a champion in the world. I mean, they used to be world champions for many years. But yeah, I mean, England is the one who started this game. And since they ruled India, so they gave it to us. But it's pretty, I mean, it's an international game, many countries play too.
My family and I were in Europe one time and traveling on a train and sitting right next to us was the Egyptian cricket team. And they were a hoot. So that was a, that was six hours of fun with them.
Yeah.
So, well, good. All right, so on page six, we have, I'll read the statement of consistency and reasonableness. Z O nine dash two one is consistent with the East Rowan Land Use Plan and reasonable and appropriate based on the addition of green space to the plan. Field lights will not be used in adopted conditions. I make that in form of a motion. Second, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then do we have a motion to approve with the conditions on page six and seven, Z O nine dash two one?
So moved.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Well, congratulations and good luck to you. Best of luck, uh huh. All right, Jim?
All right, good evening commissioners. It's nice to finally see you today. We'll, we'll try to make this quick. So the first graph we have is the expenditures through the month of December. As you can see for fiscal year twenty twenty two, we're at seventy five million dollars. Last year at the same time, we're at seventy four point five, which is an increase of five hundred thousand dollars. April next, all right. Cumulative revenue through December, we're at eighty eight point five million. Last year at the same time, eighty four point three million, which is roughly a four point two million dollar increase over last year. Next slide, April. Of course, the two big drivers of this, property taxes, sixty one point three million. This year, last year at the same time through November was fifty nine point two million. April, next slide. Uh, one more slide. There we go. And sales tax through September, eight point six million this year. Last year we were at seven point six million. And at least preliminary review of October, it looks like we will increase some more.
Any comments?
We, we, we just keep plugging away.
This number's from September.
Yes, sales tax are roughly three months behind schedule.
At least that. Sometimes four.
And, and by, so, yeah, October's just came in this week.
I knew it wasn't supposed to be more than nine days.
Just the timing.
Any red flags? Any, uh, I know we talked about some decisions to make in July with only half of the information.
Correct.
Though the expenditure side that will be asked.
Yeah.
All right, we have budget amendments, commissioners, we have a motion approved by.
Aye. Talking of.
Yes. Our health department director asked me to share this with everyone, that our county is up to forty five hundred twenty seven active cases of COVID primarily Omicron, which makes our positive rate at thirty two point six percent. And we're averaging about three hundred and fifty nine new cases a day, which makes us one of the worst in the state. But approximately three, three percent of our whole population currently has COVID. Sixty four individuals in the hospital and six on vents, so please. Sixty four people in the hospital with COVID. So please, please, please wash your hands. Have your distance and wear a mask.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.